Where to do it is actually.
Yeah, I thought that originally, but it, you know, that's, well, it's okay. We can, if, if.
So I'm giving a call to hold the, please show them everything and then.
Okay, okay, that's fine. I just, I just, sorry. I just want to get all going as well.
It's just.
Okay.
The thing is, the grease, you know.
I was just making a motion.
The radio show.
Brian's car too.
Yes. There's no, it's just flat. Oh really? See the, the base? Oh man, that's why it's just.
Okay. I can't even.
That's mine? That's mine.
They're taking some notes.
But, but that's when you recover.
Yes.
Produced from.
Some.
We were at. We were at. You know how many people.
Thank you. Cause you're gonna put together a radio show. Oh, you're gonna get that from.
Eric said. It's, of course.
More than side back. Yeah. Hopefully. That'd be good.
There's no big, I don't know if the matter.
I took.
Hey. They were just there to ask questions. We didn't make.
I think actually still was. They want to get paid. We just. With Kevin.
Well, CEO was on that. He's. I, I, I said, I said. We, we both said.
Take my hat. I don't know if it matters or not, but I don't, I don't do it. Probably fucking petty or had to work.
Can I? Eric. Eric.
It's what could be classified. A hundred and some to thirty-four.
All right.
Recomplification. There was a recomplification of ordinance. Right. Ordinance from two thousand seven.
So it says you can't tell surrender. Actually, it says ordinance twenty fifteen over six, one, one, one.
Was reenacted then.
Right. They just re-upped it.
It was recoded when they redid the numbers. Don't you remember when you guys did it with the?
Well, it wasn't taken out.
No, it was all the, because it's also got other things in it too, like there were other offenses that were in there disorderly conduct. That got done when you guys did the big hearing with Eileen and you redid all the ordinances, cause you put them into a chapter system.
Yeah, we'll get that. It's anything we're trying to do.
Yeah, it kinda makes everybody selling screens and pipes illegal. It's really dumb. Any, any controlled substance laws you need, you just go to the state. You don't need your own law.
Right.
Chris, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. You all join me for pledge allegiance?
I appreciate this. To the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Go home.
Eric.
Here.
Jason.
Here.
Here. It's a pretty good chance. That's from. Our previous meeting. We're gonna have to make a motion for approval minutes in January twenty-third, twenty twenty.
Seven.
We had had to make a couple corrections. So, right now there's a motion to approve them. For the second, so.
You might change the name from that one here. Well, yeah, I mean, there was just a couple of slight errors. I guess we have a question. Okay, I just, what'd you find here? Um. The second page under new business, uh, I think it's one, two, three, six paragraph down. Gunnels was not against having the micro businesses. Gunnels was for having micro businesses. Just wanna make that correction.
Okay.
But that's just, that's pretty much it.
Okay. I'll take that.
Okay.
So with that change, I would, I would have hoped to approve. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to accept the comedians of last month's minutes. As amended to read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye's have it. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
Sir. Want to take a say aye?
Aye.
Aye as well. Aye's have it. Alright, this portion of the, of the meeting is now open. For public comments, please keep your comments to three minutes. State your name and address when you speak at the podium, please. Anyone?
So my name's Stephen Green, formerly Scott Road. I'm a. I, I just rose today to talk about a couple of things. First, I think I'm concerned about what I read here on the agenda versus what, um, had at the last meeting and then also at the subcommittee meeting. Committee to prom, propagate the rules. Um, it shows here that you guys are gonna be taking report from that committee and it seems to me that that, in my mind, might be a little difficult in that the, you know, in attending that meeting as, as part of, of that work group. Uh, that there were any votes or discussion about what this recommendation should be. Um, that there, that we really didn't even accomplish the main goals there, which were to investigate these particular items, like H, I, and J, I believe they are. Uh, because they were part of the medical ordinance and, um, were, um, you know, new to recreational market holding and needed some definition and then some recommendation. I thought that's what the committee, the subcommittee was formed to do. But the committee just really discussed other things at the majority of that meeting and then, um, uh, the committee, it broke down into three individual discussions with, uh, subgroups of that larger group that never, that weren't on part of an agenda. This would just broke down into casual conversation. Um, so concerned about that process because it, I mean, if we're gonna take a report from the committee to propagate the rules. First off, I think Eric had made a motion at this last meeting, no?
Uh, it was not. It was a workshop. Steve, there's no motions or any, no decisions could be made at the, in a workshop and that was just.
No, no, but at the, at this last meeting, you, you had made a, you had made a motion to hold this subcommittee and, and meet until we had come up with a new ordinance. And I'm just, I was concerned about that. So I just wanted to raise that as an issue. And then secondarily, if, if we're gonna undo this rec market thing, I think the thing that's most important to, to keep in mind is the idea of, of leaving this open to the small market guy. So that if, if you do it, you did not only do it in name only, but do it indeed, which would include making some space or taking zoning away as an issue for guys that wanted to have a, you know, like micro license, micro business license. Um, if you allow for those licenses, but then don't allow territory, because it's already been taken up by the med guys and rec guys, or, you know, that would be rec guys. Um, that doesn't allow them much opportunity, given that you're going to allow for those kind of, including those kind of licenses to be applied for. So that was important. And then lastly, I think I'm running out of time. Um, I, I just wanted to remind, uh, this committee and, you know, I guess I'll come back and remind the, the board at large that, um, remember if we, if we don't get this right, that, that there's always a chance that the community might fight back and, and do a referendum and, and try and put, uh, uh, you know, it's collect signatures and, and put a, put an initiative on, on the ballot and take that, this entire issue away from now this committee, but the board itself. Um, and that, that's all I wanted to reflect here today. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment? I'd like to make a motion to close this section of public hearing.
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye's have it. Okay, at this time, I'd like to have a report of the committee. I know you guys didn't, it doesn't sound like you had a chairperson or you, uh, took minutes, but Kevin presented us with some information. Would, uh, and I know that Eric, that you were there, so would you?
Jason was Jason?
Yeah.
You guys have something that you'd like to share?
I, I have a, a couple of, uh, points I, I don't.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go first. Uh, one was, um, we kind of, it brought to my attention that, um, that if the facilities, um, were, um, if the facilities that we had previously licensed for MMFLA, uh, which is medical, that if, once we approve this for rec, there's a potential for, uh, a potential scenario of unintended consequence, which is that if the facilities decide that they no longer want to, um, apply for an MMFLA license due to either the high cost of the license or, or otherwise, or simply because of the market share that they have to, um, sell to. Obviously, medical, we know is a hundred and so thousand patients, uh, whereas recreational is something like five point five potential, potentially five point five million people in Michigan. So essentially it was brought up that, that there's a, there's a potential that, um, the patients, uh, would be, uh, sort of left out of the picture. In other words, uh, if all these facilities turn rec, uh, then, uh, then a, a medical marijuana patient with a valid MMFLA card or carrier for that matter too, would then be subjected to the sixteen percent sales tax and whereas otherwise, um, but I honestly, I was, uh, that was, that was, uh, that was one I, I had, I had overlooked, um, originally. I had really sort of contemplated that struggle, that back and forth. I've done a lot of research on that, asked around, asked how people, they thought about that. It was mentioned by one of the facility owners, uh, that they would be happy to, you know, main, like if, if they'd be hap, they would support a policy if we main, if we required people to maintain a, an MMFLA license. Uh, but then I, I started giving that a little more second thought and I, honestly, I felt well, the best way to address this is actually to contact LA. And there is a gentleman by the name of Desmond Mitch, Desmond Mitchell. And, um, I contacted him by email. This was the, it's a copy of the email that I sent him. I'll just share that with the board right now, just for, uh, to be able to read. I, at the same time, I don't feel that we should be meddling in the market. Sort of, uh, I guess, in a sense, rigging that market. So looking back, kind of giving it a, a very hard consideration, uh, I still think we, 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 the township has had a free market approach this entire time, uh, with both the medical and so far with the rec. I think what we would, if we attempted to enforce that type of policy, what we may be inadvertently doing is creating unfair advantages between, uh, facilities. I think, looking back at it now, that, that's really, honestly, that is a good idea. I think we should just, if you read that, uh, email, um, the LA is, LA is actually well aware of this potential problem and they have an entire year to address this issue before it becomes an issue. At the end of the two-year, uh, head start that the MMFLA licensed facility, uh, owners and possess, people that possess that license have an ability to sell rec two years ahead of anyone else that just comes in to apply for rec. They have until, I believe, December twentieth of twenty twenty to propagate more rules on that. Listening to, um, you know, the fact that, uh, LA is already well aware of this, I think we can kind of maybe expect a change, LA to address that change. So at this time, I don't think it's necessary to address that change. With that, I mean, uh, that was, that was just one of the, one of the main things that I took away from that meeting, you know, that day, so.
So I guess I kind of got lost.
Did you, did you read the email?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
So the, is admitting the conversation that the committee have wasn't your opinion or recommendation that they should have a MMFLA license to obtain an MRTMA license?
I don't. No, not at this time. I don't see the reason to do that now. I, um.
That's, that's where we were at last, last month.
Oh, sure. You know, we've, and, you know, and, and just for transparency reasons, um, you know, I, I just called you on the phone to, you know, just to kind of brief you on what I had learned, uh, so that you could do your own research. Um, so in the, uh.
How about the other, the three issues that I asked you yesterday, the marijuana micro businesses that doesn't mean consumption establishments and temporary. I see that, uh, you have, I have some information here on the board. Though I just got it, so, you know.
Well, so far, uh, so far, as we can tell, no one has come forward for a temporary marijuana event or a consumption lounge. And being that that is the case and being that those are sort of executive add-ons, uh, and, and at this time, I don't think we need to address it. If we, we most certainly can, if the board directs us to meet again to address those.
Absolutely.
Later this year, we can address that.
Any place can be changed.
However, H, I think, as I noted before, uh, was something that the voters voted on. And I think that that's, I think that, that's something to take, uh, to note because if the voters already have voted for it and they already approved it. Likewise, I've also been told and I don't, and I, and no one seems to have a clear, um, indication as to, uh, piecemealing parts of the rec, uh, license. Meaning, uh, cause I, I spoke with one individual and he seems to be of the opinion that when you take in the rec, you kind of take it all then. Okay. However, with the exception of the marijuana event and the marijuana consumption lounge, because that's, that's not, like I said, it's not part of the original language of law.
Right. I do know that you can, a township or a city can opt out of all three. So it's not something that is amended or just become a law and passed.
Well, and, and, and like I said, I, I think, I've had conflicting information both ways. I think what may happen is we may very well, in the next year or two, we may get a court ruling on that. I, I, at this time, I don't, I don't think it's, um, you know, like I said, the, the temporary marijuana event and the consumption lounge, I think those are separate from the rest of the act as a whole.
I, I agree with that.
Okay, so the rest of the act as a whole includes the marijuana micro business. And so I think maybe, you know, that should be probably our main focus, but we can leave, we can, we can table the other two, um, for discussion at later times or, or as needed, you know, as needed. I, I.
Especially here, permit type of thing.
I agree. Okay. It's all.
That was the one who would have that.
Right.
Right. And I, and I think that, you know, then we would have to.
No, by the, the micro businesses, from what I understand, they're a smaller business. It's, uh, they're, have a smaller restriction.
Right.
But, Eric, I don't know if this will be, from what I did, we're not gonna have that.
No, 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 it, it, it doesn't.
Right. It's, it's still gonna have to be in a commercially zoned.
Correct.
So I'm not sure what restrictions would be taken off.
I don't.
Other than, other than, you know, whatever their dispensary or whatever, I'm not sure.
Right, well, the.
Just, just the restriction in the amount of plants, does that make any difference?
That's right. Well, and the fact that, as you can see right here, it's, it's, all the product is self-contained. The, the main, the main difference is that one of these micro businesses cannot interchange purchase cannabis from another facility or another grower or processor. Okay, so it's a, it's an in-house thing. And in this sense, you could like kind of look at it as like a whole nother separate animal in a sense, in, in a figure of space here. Uh, yes. And it comes with, it comes with a different set of criteria. One that is not the same criteria as the MMFLA. So with that, I, I, and I think we, uh, we are a, we are, to the most part, a low-income community. I think the majority of people here are lower income. I think, I think the micro business fits that for township quite well. I think that is the ideal, uh, model, in fact, for this community, as, as I've always seen. But we, we approved, uh, medical and that is a statement of our intent and our principles and so we are, we're licensing all of these facilities as far as I know. So, and we're allowing them to sell rec. So with that, I don't see any restrictions on that. We just, I think it's pretty cut and dry. Uh, we could just approve that. But, uh, let's check my notes here. I mean, if you want, if we, I mean, I don't see there's any reason to, I mean, just, I, I, I don't, I cannot come up with a restriction in my mind. So I, I don't. I mean, other than just taking a vote on it right now and approve it.
Get to that.
Okay.
Right now, right now, we're just going to.
Oh, right, sure. Or, 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 yes. And, and Jason.
Do you have anything to, to say?
I think we did kind of discuss going over IMJ as a case-by-case basis and then H was kind of, like Eric said, we kind of talked about. So IMJ were just basically as a case-by-case basis. It wasn't something that, we're kind of limited to any areas and definitely we're limited by our, what we have.
Of course, property.
Yeah.
Right.
And on that same token with the micro businesses too, there's only, I looked at the mask complaint, there is only so many places in the townships.
Right.
That are limited to that too. We're limited by what we have.
Yeah.
Right.
Very, very small.
Property.
Right. I, I mean, if we were, um, like a, you know, SAG now or something like that, or if we were, if we were even being a township, uh, if you have a township has, you know, commercial properties, you know, peppered all over the place. I kind of think we don't need, we don't, that's not an issue for us. That's not for a township.
Right.
Yeah.
Anything else, Eric, you know?
Uh, I already, I already discovered.
We did, we did do a lot of office.
Oh, by, by the way, I, you know, the, uh, the email that I shared with you, I, you know, I'm, I'm more than happy to keep, like, let that be public record. You know, uh, you can make copies of it, give it to the rest of the planning commission, uh, members. You can also give that to the board of trustees. Alright, it's just, it's just a, an email, you know, I think it, but when I called them and I asked them the question, you know, the director immediately told me, oh, we are well aware of this problem. You know, it is a, it is a serious problem and they know that. So because LA knows that's a problem, I kind of, I'm, I'm of the opinion right now that the state, because the state, every time that the, the state has a problem so far, the director, Brisbo and, uh, and those, they, they've come together and they've addressed it. So I, I think if we give LA another year, uh, you know, I think they'll kind of correct that.
I think we're gonna be passing a change.
And we.
We're already changing.
Well, well, and that's because the voters, obviously, of all the calls.
It sounds like everything's been changed this summer again, so.
It, it may, but I, I, I think that they're aware and I, and I, if you read my solution there, I think that'll be the, the solution, but, uh, but anyway, I just forwarded that to them because I, I just thought it was the right thing to do. And I just want to be for, and I, I want to give that to everybody, give a copy of that to everybody just for transparency reasons.
I'd like to thank everybody that was there, part of the committee for spending your time. I appreciate it. Alright, so. Like to make a motion to open a regular plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Aye's have it. Alright, unfinished business. We have some, uh, unfinished businesses, the ordinance that we have, so. We need to amend current, our current ordinance to include recreational language.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
What you can do is make a motion to.
Can't hear you, Chris. Please.
This is, this is.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, what you can do is approve this language and I understand, um, I, I saw this definition, you know, I think we can incorporate all that and then deleting the section regarding the fifteen-hundred land parcel and everything else that was discussed at the last, um, I need permission to move. And just approve the, to recommend this to the township board, because then they can get a move on and, uh, they can handle it at the next meeting, because obviously it's still up to them. And I think the only other thing was just adding these two definitions to section that HI, yeah, H, H and J.
I don't think they want, they want to include IMJ in.
Really? Okay. And that's, so we'll remove.
Yeah.
Remove IMJ.
Remove IMJ.
Because again, they, the township board could, could often put it back in there. So this would be the recommendation to the board to adopt.
Or, or the board could just refer back to the planning commission and say, we want you to do IMJ.
That's, we're. But they didn't have to do that.
Right.
You can just do it.
Right.
They did it the last.
Okay. But if they want to, they could.
Right.
Okay. And, and I'm fine. We serve at the pleasure of the board, so that's fine.
So what did you just say I should say?
So you could, you could make a motion to adopt or make a motion to recommend the, the marijuana ordinance as written currently for, from what we have, to include, uh, the definitions and.
And the changes that were, the committee came up with here.
Correct.
Cause we had some of it last, at our last meeting.
Right.
So, and you've emailed me the copy of that and everything is good.
Right, and I'll, I'll add these and then that is what will be recommended to the board for approval. Just to, to get a move on.
Okay. So, well. Did we? Did we want, did we want to talk about the micro business now? Do we want, do we want to talk about the micro business now? I mean, are we gonna add that to that? Are we getting?
Well, that's, what I, my understanding is that it's added. It's just the def, just adding this definition and it'll be included in the ordinance.
Okay.
So that'll be permitted.
It will be permitted. But that's in the existing ordinance. As written. They, they.
No.
It's not in the.
No.
It's not in, it's.
It's an amendment.
Yeah.
Right, we're, we're still talking about amending the original MMFLA ordinance.
Correct. To include recreational and to include rec in it, that's what, we're just changing the language inside, but.
Okay.
So this would be the recommendation, is the ordinance as written with the changes from the committees and the board.
Okay. So, so we are gonna move forward with not drafting a parallel ordinance. We are, the idea is to move forward with just amending the current ordinance.
To add all this, the language necessary to allow for retail establishments and provision centers. One is for rec, one is for the under the MMFLA, so to incorporate both of those.
You are aware that I did vote no on the MMFLA.
You are aware that I did vote no on the MMFLA ordinance, right? I mean, I, there are some issues that I had with that. I don't wanna, I don't wanna trip this up by putting it, you know, unamended, like, completely unamended without, and then I get there and I go, well, I don't like this language, I don't like this language.
What are those?
You know, so.
That's an issue bringing up at the board, I, I haven't, this is the first time hearing it, so then, I guess we could address those issues.
I just, because, because you are on the board of trustees, so that's when, I mean, exactly, you guys can take care of all those little things that, that you have issue with.
I think he's trying to say one no vote tubes the whole deal here.
Yep, I understand.
And, and, and that, that's the thing too, I mean, I, I wanna make sure that we're, we're doing our best here to come together as a community, as, as boards of this, as board representations of this community, uh, that we create an ordinance that works for everybody, not, you know, not just a few or weird show partiality to any one group or so forth. I mean, I think it's important that we do that.
As do I, and that's, and right now, and that's why I don't think, I don't think we need to write a whole new ordinance. The ordinance that is in place right now was passed by the board of trustees.
Yes, but it, but understand.
Right now, so while we're looking at, we're looking at totally, you mentioned marijuana.
Right.
Ordinance is not what we're looking at right now, we're looking at adding.
Right.
Amending the current ordinance to include recreational.
Right, but I think, you know, it's still ideal that you'd want my yes vote approval on that final thing. Whereas it is with, uh, you know, with the way it's currently written, I would vote no. So I, I, we just, we have to address some other issues with that. So I think that, you know, it, it, as long as, as I mean, as long as we're going to include the micro business, which we have not even, we haven't taken, we haven't taken a vote on.
This will include that.
We will include that, the motion is ready, it will include.
This micro business.
Everything within the first phase. Yeah, the, the micro business.
I have a question. I'm, I'm kinda new to this, so apologize, I fumbled through it. So, at our meeting, at our workshop, we kinda discussed leaving this original MMFLA alone and then doing, uh, I don't know if it's another one with added language? I can't remember what we've talked about, or doing.
A rec alone. Just like flat.
Adopt these rules and we just have one little paragraph of the ballot that said for rec, yeah?
No, this, how this would work, this would incorporate all both, it would apply for MMFLA.
So we would just change the pervert, I would say.
Right, in the, in the beginnings, that's in my recitals of the ordinance, it talks about, you know, the, the definitions from the MRTMA and the MMFLA and incorporates all of those, so whether you're talking about a provisioning center or retail sales.
They gotta follow these same rules.
Right, it's, it's.
No exceptions or changes.
Different rules, different laws.
Well, they have different rules from the state.
From the state.
So if you're getting a medical or a medical license, you know, you're gonna have to go down that path. Or if you're getting a retail rec license, you have to go down that path. But this ordinance, uh, incorporates both of those and re, has the same requirements for a facility.
It's a kinda like, I mean, my opinion is, they're almost like two different animals. I mean, I'm new to this, so I don't, I don't know.
Well, just in the sense that, one is, one is recreational and one is medical. So there's, there's slight differences at the state level, but this ordinance would make those, you know, building requirements and the applications pretty much identical. The only thing is, is that what you're gonna have from the state is different than what we're gonna be looking at. We're not gonna set two different rules for, for, you know, a retail sales center as opposed to a provisioning center. They're basically gonna fall under the same requirements under the theft or township ordinance.
We did have a discussion too about, go ahead, Jason.
Well, uh, yeah, I mean, obviously, but, you know, I, I, I think what really just changes, I mean, because what, what changes this whole discussion is the vote that was taken in twenty eighteen. I mean, when we discussed the MMFLA license, um, you know, that was a piece of legislation put forth by the legislative branch of the state of Michigan. Uh, whereas when we view the definitions and the, and the classifications of everything in rec, that's something that was for the voters in the form of a voter referendum. And it's just that the, the mindset here is just night and day. When we, when we drafted the language for the MMFLA, marijuana was just as illegal as it always has been for the last eighty-some years. And, but with that said, uh, you know, today is, you know, marijuana is not illegal. Mr. Chair, for, there are some issues that I think we need to go back and address with the MMFLA.
What, what, from the MMFLA are you referring to? I guess I, I, because I don't understand, because the only thing that the ordinance does is adopt the language from those acts as they're still interpreted. Just because, it, it was their language in the.
Well, I mean, for, for.
Yeah, just, just.
Well, I mean, for one, I mean, the MMFLA refers to the commercial district of only the, uh, what, what we refer to as the green triangle now in theft or township. I mean, it isolates that, I mean, if you put that language forth and it goes before the board of trustees, I'm automatically gonna vote no, because, because that's not.
To, the, it's industrial, and you guys can tell me if I'm wrong, it's industrial light, light manufacturing. Are you saying that you would wanna have it, expand it to other zoning areas, I guess I don't understand.
Well, yeah, because I, because, because, because when the, when the voters approved this, they didn't say, you know, and then approved with the exception, you know, this only. You know, that's not the, that's not the intent of that act. So when I, so as I read that act and I interpret that language, I interpret it with an open mind of what the voters intended. What's the voters, what was the voter intent here? And I think that if I, if I restrict that, then I'm going against the voter intent, so that's what the issue I have. So I mean, I'd be, you know, and as the gentleman earlier, Steve Green, mentioned, I mean, there's a ballot petition process that overrides all this. I don't wanna, I don't wanna have to go down there, because I think, I think we, we are doing a good job of diplomacy right now. I think we are making headway, I mean, we're, we're making progress, I'd like to continue that progress. But I think that, but I think it merits the discussion of that we need to address those factors. I mean, this is for the benefits of the residents, I think the residents have a, uh, should have an opportunity, you know? I mean, if this, if this, if this commercial property we're leaving out, I think that they should be aware of this.
I say it's a, the board's decision.
Sure. No, but I, I mean, I wanna put something before the board, that's just, I want, I would like to, I would like to know that this is gonna be.
We did this before, we put something in front of the board before. It's their decision to vote the way that they decide, and that happened the last time, I'm sorry that it didn't go the way that we put it down before, but that's not our job, that's their job, that's your job.
Oh, I know, but I, I would think our job was to.
I'm just pointing, you guys were elected.
Sure.
So it comes to, the whole board, not just you on that board, all the members of that board are the ones that made that decision.
I, I, I feel like what Eric's saying here is, like, we essentially have two, maybe three different animals here. I mean, uh, maybe I'm wrong, I'm kinda new to this, so, I mean, you got your medical, which was, uh, legislation, and then you got a voter rec and rec, and then, and then kinda like, you know, like the micro businesses, it's like, it seems like they're almost three different. If we're, if we're gonna make recommendations to the board, it seems like we have three different things to talk about. And I think that's, is that, is that kinda what you're saying here?
Yeah, in a, in a way.
They almost need their own ordinances, that's the thing, you gotta do it tonight.
Well, it, it, it just, it's just that my, my issue is that as soon as we, as soon as we approve, that, uh, if we make a decision to put this before the board, um, that just means all of the language on the MMFLA, the, you know, there's additional requirements that are not, that are put forth in our ordinance that have nothing to do with a micro license. So those, a person applying for a micro license does not have to go through those requirements, or shouldn't have to, but if we're, but if we're arbitrary.
That's why I asked you earlier, what, are, what requirements don't they have to go through? They're still gonna have to come in, they're still gonna have to go through all the building, the building codes, all those requirements are still gonna have to be, no, so what are you talking about that is different?
Well, one of them is the, the commercial district definition, and I think that that is, that's part of the issue I have, okay, so.
So it's a, it's a zoning issue? It's nothing, that's what I'm trying to get to you, that's, that language that we're putting in here, it's, it's the same as, I don't understand. What laws, I'm trying to get at.
And you're identifying the correct, you're identifying this correctly, it's the same, I don't like the same, it, that, I, I wanna see that language change. I wanna see, I wanna see this language change, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna have to, I don't wanna have to throw up my hands and say, sorry, guys.
It's not, it's not permitted, resident, you would, you'd wanna have micro businesses residential areas, I guess.
They're doing it.
No, 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 because you can't, you can't.
Doing it.
So, but you, but, 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 what the, but originally the MMFLA drew a little circle and said nothing outside the circle.
Mr. Chair, if I may, okay, if the issue is zoning, people can apply for, to rezone parcels, you know, this, I, I guess.
Yeah, but we're not spot zoning.
Correct, but what, I, I, I just, I guess I don't understand.
Chris, that's different.
I guess what I'm saying is, is your, 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 the MMFLA cuts out, it, it just isolates us to one specific small area in townships.
We do going over the same thing here. The, the, the board of trustees, the people that were voted into this community, they are the ones who made that decision and I guarantee they're gonna make that same decision again.
You, you guarantee that, you know something I don't?
Well, I guess I can't guarantee, but speaking, speaking of the majority of them so far, they don't want anywhere other than where it's at. They voted that way.
Oh, well, well, they, well, they shot, why did you say that? We're wasting our time, I mean, we don't even need to do this, I mean, I'm just bypassing what the ballot initiative, Mike just said it.
I do have it.
I mean, I mean, I'm sorry, did, did the board, I mean, did the board put you up to this, I don't understand here, I don't.
Be up to this.
I, I, I.
My job is to represent the board, these members here, my, my job is to run the meeting. So I don't understand why, where you get where I was put up to, I'm giving you my opinion and that's all.
Yeah, and I'm just giving you my opinion too, this is, I don't, I don't wanna, I, I do not wanna create a contentious situation where we just say, you know.
It sounds dismissive, it's only gonna go forward if it goes forward the way that you want it to go.
Well, I, I wanted to go for, well, I, I, look, I'm very adamant about these things, I'm very adamant about, about the micro businesses, I'm very adamant about giving my community residents an opportunity that they should have.
That's why I want.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would just have a vote, and if it's voted down, it's voted down.
Well, the, where does it say it's limited to the, my, where does it say it's limited?
In the ordinance, is it, this, it says that these businesses will apply to, I don't even, in front of me, industrial.
It's in the zoning amendment, it's in the zoning amendment.
So that, it's only allowed in those districts, if that's an issue that you have a problem with, I would, this is talking about what language from the rec is gonna be added so that, that, you know, they can move forward with businesses that would have recreational sales.
Sure.
Um, if you have an issue with those specific parts, that's, it's already passed, what we're adding is the recreational language, so I.
And I don't believe it says anything about green, some triangle, everything, it says commercial and industrial.
Yeah, but it, it does isolate that to the.
But that's, that's what's been chosen, so are you, you wanna be, have it open up to other districts of rec, what's?
And, and I, and I guess.
Zoning district.
Okay, and look, I, I guess, I guess.
That's not necessarily what was part of what the planning commission is supposed to be doing with this ordinance, I guess.
Okay, well, it's just that, it's just that what I'm encompassing here is the understanding that we had a, a, that we, when we drafted that before, okay? Prop one did not exist, okay, it did not exist, therefore, there is, there was zero consideration for anything outside of that or what the board decided, okay? This is a totally new day, I mean, like, a new day and a lot of different levels for this township. Uh, with that said, you know, the voters enacted something that I have a mandate to address with forth. I, I, I have to discuss these kinda things, these are small variables, what, what could be one sentences or whatever, but I've gotta be able to address those. If I have concerns that this is just a, this is all, all a preconceived, uh, you know, meeting out here, we're just supposed to rubber stamp everything that the, that the board tells us to do, I, I, I don't feel that's what we are, I feel that we are independent minds.
Obviously, they don't feel that.
I can't hear you, Mike, please, thank you, I, I do wanna hear what you wanna say.
It, right.
What, what were you saying, please?
I lost my screen.
Okay.
Okay, I just, um.
If I could have thirty seconds, I think I could clear something up.
No, sorry, it's not the time, you walk up to the.
Okay, um, so, you know, if there's, you know, if there's language in there that, that I don't agree with, then, then I don't, I, I don't wanna have this, I don't wanna have a, if I feel that diplomacy is just right out the window, then there's no point in me even being here. I mean, I just, why don't I just do a ballot, the ship and say, okay, you know, to back with whatever you guys have to say. I think that you should dive into this material and discuss these things item by item.
Chair, may I make a suggestion? The, if you're, if the issue that you're caught up on is the zoning districts where it's allowed, you could push it forward minus that section and leave that up to the board of trustees to determine which zoning sections the, it would be permissible use of. Because I think if it stays here, you know, it's, it's not necessarily moving the ball forward, um, if that, if that's the point of contention, uh, push it forward.
Is that the only point of contention?
Well, so, so, so let's just, uh, let's just, I, well, let's address those, I mean, basically, I mean, I came prepared tonight to address a new ordinance or, uh, a mere ordinance that, because it, it, it didn't seem logical to me to just sit there and, and piggyback the other ordinance with a rubber stamp, not even addressing a single issue that was changed in two thousand and eighteen. That's my point, the things changed in two thousand and eighteen, the world changed, the world changed in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, so the language that has anything to do with the changes in the law, the ordinance has a reason, doesn't it? It's, it's just.
It adopts those changes.
Um, Eric, is there something, is there something you wanna take out specifically, let's, let's.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Let's talk about, I mean, can we, there's, I mean, there's something.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the other, the other properties of, of theft or township, we left them off the table last time, okay? That was, that was, I mean, I, I tried to say, look, create, create an equal opportunity playing field for everybody then, but I was, I was voted down, okay? I understand that I was voted down, I totally get that, Mike, I do, but today is a different day.
I think that by leaving that decision up to the township board, you know, that, I, I think that addresses that concern of it's, you know, if you're saying that you wanted it more zoning districts than just the industrial, the light manufacturing, then leave that up to the township board to determine what, uh, what districts it should be allowed.
Why, why shouldn't we talk about it as a planning commission, I don't see why we shouldn't.
You can, you're, it's your free to do that.
Sure, so then, then why don't we do that?
Why not?
Why don't we, I, I don't see.
And, and what's, what's your recommendation, what, what is your suggestion, other than the current, the areas that we?
Tell, I mean, you want me to go through the MMFLA ordinance, you want me to gun our ordinance, because I could, I mean, I could probably go through it, probably. I tried about twenty lines, because I don't like it, steps in, so, I mean, I mean, the, the, what I'm saying is, take those arbitrary restrictions off, okay?
Such as, such as, that's why I'm asking.
If it's, if it's not, if it's not, if it, look, if it's not in state law, okay, if it's not a restriction in state law, then I don't want it there, okay? Let's just, I mean, let's just keep it real simple.
So you're, you're, I'm guessing you're referring to the decision we made last month about the restrictions on churches and parks.
Well, that's, well, the churches, I mean, that's definitely one of them, I think that's a definite point of contention we need to address. Uh, the other is the.
We did address that last.
Yeah, but I don't think you guys were.
The board, the planning board approved leaving that language the same.
Yeah, I don't think you guys were prepared at all, you know, for that, it just seemed like you guys were caught like deer in headlights on that one, I didn't, I didn't.
It's pretty clear where I was, my thoughts were.
You, you think, wait, 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 you, you, let me just say this, you think that, you think that we should, you think that we should block that from, from being your churches?
I vote against that, so I do, I think.
Well, it was, I think, wait, in the original MMFLA vote, did we, I thought that was a unanimous decision by this board, that we did, and then, and then the, I'm sorry?
I changed my mind, I did change my mind.
Oh.
And, and I did, so.
Oh, but you're, you're changing your mind against what the voters approved?
No, the voters approved to put the language. No, the voters approved to put the language in the ordinance to have five hundred feet from a church. That's what that's what's in our ordinance right now. So I totally agree with what is in the ordinance.
That was in the ordinance of the original MMFLA and that decision was based on the fact that marijuana was still illegal as it always once was. Today, that is a completely different discussion. That is a it's it's off the table now because it's not a it's not a thing that we would that that I it's not a thing I would support because the if the voters wanted that there or if the 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 people who wrote the law and if they wanted that there, then they would have included it. I mean, there's it's one thing to say this about alcohol, but alcohol is not medicine. Alcohol is not marijuana. There's a it's a big difference here. So I I see that as a problem and so I see that as a as an obstruction both on a constitutional level and as a as a and as a as a township law for the rights of the people that live here.
So so I guess from your statements right now, Eric, I'm I'm really from last month's meeting and your statements right now about which I'm concerned about, it tells me you have a conflict of interest.
I would.
If you own a business that's right across from a church.
Mike, can you talk into the mic, please? I'm losing you.
I believe you have a conflict of interest just because of your statements that you're making right now.
I would think that you also have a conflict of interest simply because it seems that you've been put up to this.
Yeah, I have my own mind. Nobody makes me think.
And I'll accept that. I'll accept that. If you would like to talk about the potential of conflict of interest that I have, then please ask away. I I've submitted all kinds of I've submitted all kinds of evidence to this board. I've I've welcomed you to ask me questions about any potential conflict of interest. I would be more than happy to address that.
I haven't, I really haven't felt like you have had, and I backed you up on it. I'm the one who's told people that I didn't think that you did. But listening to your conversation today, I believe that you have a conflict of interest. That's my opinion and I have that right to have that opinion.
Are you having that opinion though? Because some people are.
No, I don't I don't.
I mean, you realize you have an opinion. I listen to you for the last twenty minutes of your conversation. Sure.
That's where I'm getting my opinion from right now because last week, if you remember, I did not feel that you had a conflict of interest.
Right. The the reason.
I believe we need to move forward and have this continue this discussion. So I'm going to have a vote, postpone this until we have a full forum, let's say, so that we can get something done.
A full board, a full board.
Planning commission.
Yes.
Okay. And you're right, it's not gonna happen tonight. I I thought that this was gonna be a very simple thing. I thought that we were just going to end the language to move forward.
Do you Mike, let me ask you, do you?
Can you, Eric, I mean.
Okay, what? I mean, are do you have, do you have some sort of do you have some sort of religious conviction that would prevent you from making a fair decision on this?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, uh, because, you know, it.
Hey, you know where my my opinion comes from right now? I was here and you were here as well. You heard the opinion, the whole people that were out there when we had the public hearing on. Right, it's pretty pretty obvious that the community didn't want a business across a church.
I didn't get that in, I didn't get that at all. I I mean, I the life person I've heard discuss this is Kevin Lawrence and the and that the pastor of the church, which obviously has some sort of personal issue with me or whatever.
Have you have you applied, has he applied for any licenses or anything?
No.
I mean, I I.
Is it, I mean, they sell alcohol then. We talked about liquor. Beer, cigarettes, I mean, alcohol. I mean, how was that allowed? I didn't think he could do that.
You can. The only thing that you're restricted to is beer. It's it's something there.
I guess I kinda get where Eric's going with that. I mean, I didn't really think of that, but.
I mean, to to who this is going?
How was that that, um, well, I wanna get into personal things, but, you know, beer and nicotine and other things could, you know, I don't know. I don't know what your intentions are, Eric, with with your building, but.
Well, I.
I get what he's saying, though. If he did have an intention, I think he should, you know, he should. If he wanted to do something, I don't know if he's an indicator he has, but I don't know if that's a holdup or not.
Let me kinda, let me kinda, I'll I'll try to clear the air as much as I can.
Sorry, I do.
Um, you know, if this if if this township, if this board or the township board of trustees, if they want to address me or what I do at that facility, at any time, I'm open for that conversation. I am not here asking for any special privilege. I am not asking for any bareness. I am not asking for a license. I just wanna be left alone, to be honest with you. But if you're gonna draft language that that I think is my board is intending to use as a as as to weaponize this, okay, uh, for some personal attack or some political retribution, then let's let's air this out on the table. I would like to I would like to make sure that we address this before we get to a point of contention. I mean, I did have to sue this township all the way to the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals in the United States Supreme Court. I would very much not like to have to do that again. So I I I just don't wanna be attacked all because, you know, someone's got some kind of personal vendetta against me. Okay, that's that's all. I mean, if you if you have any other questions, please, I'm welcome to all the questions.
Okay, so I'm gonna make the motion that we table this until next month, next our next planning board meeting.
What, when, well, do we have to do the next month? I mean, I let's do it quicker. Let's, I'd like to do this.
From what I understand, we don't have to do it quicker. The businesses that are, you've just told me earlier that they are taken care of. This township is taking care of them. So if it's not a hurry, I mean.
Well, I I I still, I mean, it's gotta hurry, but it's I don't wanna.
I'm making a motion right now, Eric.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead. My motion was to table this discussion until our next planning board meeting next month. Can I second that motion?
Can I? I will get a, I'll second that if if you amend it by saying with a full board panel. Now, I just I just don't know. Okay, I just don't.
You can't. There's gonna be a full board.
Okay, okay. Fair, fair enough, okay. But we'll we will try to make sure everybody's here.
I certainly will.
Okay, all right, because this is a court decision, okay?
Okay, sure. So, motion has been read. Second, the call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have. Okay, so next one. Okay, now we are on new business. Under new business, we have to adopt bylaw, new bylaws for the planning commission. I would like to make a motion to adopt the current bylaws of the planning commission as presented. Uh, so it's second. Motion has been seconded. Any discussion in the motion?
Uh, yes. I'm certainly okay with it except for article seven, the conflict of interest under one D.
This is a reasonable appearance of a conflict of interest as determined by the chairperson of the planning commission.
And I just simply, my thoughts on that are that it should not be up to one individual. It should just simply be, I think that we should add into that clause a vote taken and a final decision by the determination or by the determination of the vote of the board, not decided by one individual.
Actually, it's a way, it's a way that he had just been.
Is that a motion?
Yes, or from the state, it's not. It's just by the plan. It takes the it takes the majority.
Okay, so there it is. Okay, I'm fine.
Motion has been read, seconded, call for a vote. Aye. A favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have. And the next item on the new business cannot be adopted tonight, so.
Oh, I don't know if this is where you do this or not, but could I make a motion to look into updating our thirty-five-year-old master plan?
I already have it.
Oh, is it? Okay, all right.
But absolutely. And I think that I think it should be done after we complete our ordinance because.
We gotta get that thing.
Here's what. Right, I figured it'd take a while.
There's a motion that I was gonna, a motion to have board of trustees to have a discussion concerning master plan. So if that starts the ball, then it starts in case of, uh, gray fields and start looking into the necessity because it was it was two thousand and ten was the last.
Two thousand and ten.
The adoption, there was no changes though.
Right, oh, right.
So they actually been.
And can you?
It's rather expensive from what I understand.
Well, we got a lot going on, I think, so.
So this motion, this motion will get that bothered. They'll have to look at and start making it happen because they'll have to come back to us and give us the direction.
Okay, okay.
That's important.
Um, all right.
So we're gonna reread the motion. Motion to have board of trustees have discussion concerning master plan.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Oh.
Call for a vote. A favor say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have. Okay, so like I was saying, the second, number two on the agenda, we were told by the attorney is something that that we as planning board can take care of. So it will be amended on the minutes of next.
So we don't actually have to take a vote to, okay, all right. To redirect that as, okay, all right. I mean, I just I just on that note, I just wanna add that that, you know, because that because that ordinance exists, I mean, you know, with with I I really have issue with that too. I mean, it's it's like, I think it's just important to do that because it's it's like, the last thing you wanna do is confuse police officers. The last thing I wanna do is have a have an officer holding up all these different ordinances going, oh, gee, which one way to force? You know what I mean? And if they conflict, then they shouldn't exist, so.
At this time, I'd like to have a public comments.
Most certainly, Kevin Lawrence. I heard my name mentioned several times about the churches. First of all, I'd like to say that I attended all the committee meetings for the medical marijuana ordinance when we were grabbing it. We looked over many, many different ordinances from different municipalities. All of them had restrictions for churches, daycares, parks, et cetera. So I was one that did push it in those meetings. I think you guys passed it on to the main board. The main board did put it in. Now, going back to where we are today, I've now looked at two different ordinances that were provided by the people here. One from Chestening, one from Bay City. I'd like to talk about the one from Bay City real quick that has separation requirements from property line. One hundred feet from any church, property or active religious institution, five hundred feet from existing public or private schools, fifty feet from court facilities and public safety offices, including law enforcement centers and fire stations, a hundred feet from any public park identified by the city's park and recreation plan. Chestening has buffering requirements. Distance from schools, five hundred feet from public or private elementary. Distance from churches or religious institutions, it's five hundred feet from any church or religious institution defined as exempt by the village assessor is measured door to door from the church religious institution to the address of a licensed facility structure. The only reason that I had these added in there is because it seemed to be repetitive and just about everybody's ordinance had those in there. And that's why I had asked to have it put in ours to follow the pattern of everybody else. I don't care what goes on in Porter, Lake and Lewis. I have no interest in the church. I have no interest in the property over there. It's strictly following the pattern that other municipalities have used. If we were marrying that rather than jump out and wanna be the independent first kid on the block, we just let do something different. That's my point.
Thank you, guys. Anyone else? I'd like to have more comments.
Uh, I thank everyone for coming out, uh, working hard to get this ordinance addressed and in a fashion which I think would be acceptable and appreciated by everyone in the township. With with the comment of the churches, it's not advancing any governmental agenda and it's not addressing any public policy concern. And with that, I think it if it was if it was in the law, I respect it, but it's not in the law and the people didn't vote for that. So it should not be respected. In addition, I think, but this is my and this is my main reason. It abridges the first amendment of the Constitution and I think that is the most important thing that I stand for and I always stood for. When I ran in two thousand and twelve, I put at the top of my running platform that I would champion the cause of medical marijuana and marijuana legalization, that I would not impose arbitrary restrictions upon people and businesses, you know, that government oftentimes does. And as Mr. Lawrence noted, you know, other communities have done this, but just because they're in the wrong doesn't mean that we should be also. And I'm trying to put forth an ordinance that is a a model for the state that is something that every community can look at and go, Thetford Township did this right. And I I say that because it just seems like everywhere I go in the state of Michigan, I hear Thetford Township mentioned a lot and it's often in the negative context and I would like not to see that in the future. And, you know, furthermore, again, you know, we we are in a new day, a new day of of legalization. If you want to put it in terms of morality, well, clearly, after the voters have spoken last November of two thousand and eighteen, the position I hold has the moral hybra. And with that said, I think it needs to be adhered to with what the voters had intended. Thank you. Have a good night.
I got a conflict interest thing here and I kinda look it over and I think about this kind of stuff. I mean, my experience has been with any board that I've dealt with, you have a lot of people on that board who are part of their community. They own businesses in their community. It's really tough. Like, we were talking about this at work the other day, you know, those of you from Clyl have probably heard they wanna put in or they've talked about putting in a children's hospital in Circus Park. One could say that every single person on that planning board would very much benefit from that. That would bring our housing values would jump twenty, thirty percent. Unbelievable. So I would I would say that everybody on that planning commission would have a conflict of interest. And I know, I don't know, I don't, I don't know, I don't know people personally on this board. I don't know if you own businesses or own real estate in the Green Triangle. I don't know. I mean, I'm not gonna pick out him because he's not here, but Stan picked a boat to Greenhouse. One could say he has a conflict interest if he were to vote on allowing, we just did a Talarico thing where they wanted to rezone a greenhouse. So I don't know. It's really tough to say who has a conflict interest. From what I've gathered in the short few meetings, meetings, I've seen that, I'll say this in a mean way, but it sounds like Eric's been picked out a little bit. Maybe it's warranted, maybe it's not. I don't know. But, you know, it doesn't sound like from what you guys have told me that he's applied for anything. Maybe he wants to in the future, maybe he doesn't. Maybe I do. I don't know, you know, I mean, you might do. So conflict interest is kind of a tough thing to talk about because essentially, also, everybody on this planning commission could benefit from this medical marijuana coming into our community lower in our, you know, maybe when they go to do their budget, they won't need as much money from us taxpayers, so they'll they'll just, cause they've gotten it from licenses and whatnot, so. That's all I gotta say. That's all I gotta say.
I'd like to say thank you for showing up again and being part of the process. It's not a lot of fun to sit out there and listen to us argue, I'm sure. Um, I'd ask that everybody just be patient with us. We're gonna get through this. We did the last time, so, thank you.
Motion here, Jerry. Support. If they were to say aye.
Aye.
We're about to have a public comment.
Well, we had a public comment, but I said, I'll be kind of, yeah. Yes, I said, I'll be comment, you did. Yeah, that Kevin came up and answered.